For the Coffee County Board of Education for December the 17th, 2023 to order. Last thought least to give them the attention.
Thank you, sir. I apologize again. Father, we thank you for thy many blessings. Keep us from harm, teach us to be true to each other, and indeed, Lord, just guide and direct us. And we just ask that you be with us tonight as we do the business of the Coffee County schools and work in the vast interest of our children, our young people, and our community, Lord, just guide and direct us. In these hands, we pray. Amen.
I guess we need a motion to adopt the agenda.
May we accept the agenda as presented?
First on the agenda, we have an MOU with the Etowah Foundation, and we have Dr. Greg Tanner here. Tanner here with us tonight. He's the president of South Georgia State College. And also, Ms. Kim Miller met with Dr. Tanner about this, and so she may add some, as well as Mr. Van Allen, a principal at Coffee High School. But what we've been given through the Etowah Foundation, and they're out of Carterville, Georgia, is the opportunity to partner with South Georgia State College, as well as the Etowah Foundation, to pilot a program in which they want to place a counselor focusing on graduation at Coffee High School, and another counselor focusing on graduation at Wiregrass Regional College and Career Academy. Their focus would be on helping young people graduate from high school, number one, and two, get enrolled at a college, or university, or technical college in the state of Georgia, and help create a seamless path for these young people to be able to further their education after high school. So that's the basic gist of the partnership. And they've asked that we sign an MOU or an agreement with them to enter this program with the two other groups, the Etowah Foundation, South Georgia State College. So I've got Dr. Tanner here tonight. Welcome, Dr. Tanner. And I don't know if there's anything we need to add, or if the board has any questions about this. And what I'm asking for is permission to execute the MOU once we get it hammered out. There's still some slight details that are to be hammered out, but I was going to ask the board permission to go ahead and enter the agreement with this group. Dr. Tanner?
Thank you, Dr. Elise. Okay, I'm just standing back here. I just want to say that, first of all, thank y'all for the partnership. When Etowah Foundation Regent Bradbury called me and wanted to begin the discussion of this partnership, one of the things that I'm proud to say, again, we mentioned it was from Carterville. They probably are not feeling too fond of us right now. But we're, we, you're talking about North Georgia all the way. We're the South. They called. They also called East Georgia and talked about doing that. They're not going to do it. But this is the opportunity, I think, in partnership, and as former high school principal for eight years out there, you know, I always saw those middle students right there that never got in the truck, that, you know, that didn't have any problems or whatever. This is the opportunity for us to focus on, I would say, a lot of the asylum to our kind right there. And again, we want to make sure that this right here, get them higher end, post-secondary, and I think it'll help our region. And, you know, it's just, again, it's just advancement for all of us. I think it's a partnership that all can be successful with.
Thank you, Dr. Tanner.
So just to draw out what we're going to have a council to the high school in the Wiregrass. These councils are going more or less focused on, like I said, group of students maybe that aren't.
They're 49% positions for all of them. They're not, they're full-time.
They're full-time, yeah, full-time. Two full-time positions. And again, the split is basically, Etowah Foundation has actually 40% of the salary that they'll be payable, and then we'll, we're doing about 20% South Georgia State College, and the school system will do another 40%.
And are they, are they going to do any, I guess, different duties than the councils we have now? Or we just add another council to help with their workload? Or will they be tasked with doing something different than the councils that we have now?
Yeah, man, you were going to speak to that. Primarily, it's like they, this bunch will, this council will focus on the college admission process and the graduation process, whereas the councils that we have now, they spend a tremendous amount of their time doing mental health counseling and things of that nature that really is kind of triage. It's super important at the time. So having a council that can just focus on a group of students where you're able to walk them through the FASL process, having those nights where the parents can come in and work with them on that, come in during the day, having the college visits that we do with the councils now, taking them out of the building, we'll have a person specifically to do those kinds of things. So, you know, to be able to help, what it is, is, you know, you got your top, your top 10% of your students that they know how to do everything, they can fill out the stuff, and all, and it's that next, that next middle part of students that their parents will work, just like my parents when I was, they knew how to fill out a FASL. They had to sit down with somebody, show us how to do it. And so that's what this role is for, primarily to do that and get more of our kids into college.
And that was my question, is these councils are going to have a specific set of tasks and maybe, maybe somewhat what other councils were doing, but more or less focused on kind of getting these kids into higher education.
That's right.
That was my question.
Yeah, Dr. Tanner, if I could real quickly, Chelsea, my daughter, sits on the foundation board with South Georgia State College. She came home the other night very excited, and she shared with me that Regent Bradbury has a very special sense of the South Georgia State College, both campuses, and is really invested in wanting to recruit young people in our region to stay local.
That's right.
And so that was, that was another piece of it, too. So there'll be a recruitment piece that that person is engaging in, not only for South Georgia State College, but other, other state colleges affiliated with the university system, but a really good kind of focus was to keep folks local if they can.
Yes, sir. And I want to add, too, maybe an element right there, but, you know, at South Georgia State College, we have a high number of first-generation students. And it's very, again, sitting down with them, building that relationship in order to, the FASL has so much personal information in there that a lot of people don't want to share with us, and they're trying to do it at home, and it really gets tedious. And that first-generation piece right there is a big key to this in our regional area.
Yeah, my questions were not, I like the program, and it looks like something I'm definitely interested in. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we're, you know.
I think it's not just an additional high school.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was trying to figure out, are these going to be a different, their, kind of, their tasks are a little bit different than what we have now.
And we want, South Georgia State College, maybe take them, you know, maybe a week and do an intense training on the FASL, on the mission process. Again, we know USG Technical Schools, we don't know so much, but we can make sure that they get that help. And we want to make sure that they know exactly what they're walking in, because this is constantly changing. This year, the FASL has changed.
Yes, and listen, I'm not that far removed, well, we're still dealing with some of it, and I'm telling you, we're, it's, we didn't know what we were doing.
We think it would definitely give our students a coffee high leg up to be able to have specialists in-house who's trained on the admission process from start to finish, and that they can go to at any time during the day. The parents can come, they can come. What a great advantage that we'll have to be able to do that.
I appreciate it.
Thank y'all. If it pleases the board, I would ask to put that on the present agenda to approve superintendent signing the MOU with the Etowah Foundation. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tanner. You don't have to leave.
I've got another meeting. I've got a good tip. Thank y'all.
I appreciate it.
Right, please.
All right. School update. We've got Broxton Mary Hayes Elementary School Principal here with us. So, Ms. Penis, thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Of course, I'm proud to be here this afternoon to represent Broxton Mary Hayes Elementary and share some of the wonderful things that are going on at our school. But I am reminded, being here today, that we are one coffee, one team. Our theme this year has been shine bright with success. And of course, when you think about a theme for the year, success is something that we strive to attain, and it does take a team. And through capturing kids' hearts, that was one of the words that, for November, so teamwork is the word that I'll be sharing and shining tonight, shining bright with. We are a small school in the county. We have 50 faculty and staff. We have 292 students enrolled, and you can see there our breakdown of grade levels. In reference to our theme, it is our hope that students understand that learning opportunities happen, and you don't always have to have the right answer, but that's working toward the goal to get success. As you can see here, there were many, oh, it's okay, smiling faces there at open house. We had lots of parents, lots of visitors. Teachers were ready for welcoming back their kids, and we were just, just excited to start the new 23-24 school year. During the presentation, you're going to see that there's a healthy balance of learning and activities so that children know that school is the place they want to be. This year in Coffee County, we've had lots of literacy initiatives. You see there's some things, Saxon phonics, Heckerty. Those are done in our K-2 classrooms in our early grades to build those early skills. But we also are implementing Lexia Core this year to focus on foundational skills of moving our students forward for comprehension. Of course, technology, technology integration, hands-on activities, those things are important, whole group and flexible reconstruction, and these are some of the goals for our school, math, writing, and reading, just making sure that we're meeting grade level standards by implementing activities that focus our students on a level of learning. It is Flip Flippin's quote, "If you have a child's heart, you have a child's mind," that guides the Capturing Kids' Hearts Initiative. This year in Coffee County, I know you've heard lots about capturing kids' hearts, but I think it not only has captured children's hearts, but the hearts of our faculty and staff. I see faculty and staff affirming each other. I've seen a change in the school climate. Relationships between students and teachers have been strengthened, and there is a true focus on teamwork. Of course, you can't go wrong when you celebrate your staff. So we do several things in our school building to celebrate those that are putting forth their best effort to make the days brighter for our students. Some incentives that we have for students and staff. I will tell you this, the young and old alike like to be recognized. It's always nice to hear that you've done a job well, and so we try to highlight our, our faculty and staff in the new highlight program that we have for the school system. We're not only able to recognize people within our building, but we can recognize those people who support us in other aspects, people who are right here in this very room that make a difference in our lives at our school. And of course, I could not go anywhere and not say, we are the home of the best kids. So Broxton Elementary, students are tops. This is just an example of some of our monthly celebrations with our character words for capturing kids' hearts. We love having honors assemblies where parents and grandparents and family members can come in and see our students and celebrate those successes. Shown here are several different awards. We've got Honor Roll, ABC Site Work Club, the Buck Award, Perfect Attendance. But those are the many opportunities we have to celebrate what's going on in the school, and we enjoy that with our families. Shown here, you can see some of the opportunities parents have had to come in and celebrate with us. We've got a pre-K hunt campaigning activity that they have, and just the other day, a tree trimming party in first grade, but welcoming those parents in to celebrate and do activities with our students. Students in kindergarten through fifth grade are able to participate in STEAM, so, in art activities. And shown here are just some of the many things that we've done, the stacking challenge with the cups, we've done the Capturing Kids' Hearts Friendship Bristle Activity, but these are just some examples of art and STEAM activities that we do in the school. We have enjoyed family events in our school this year so far. I left one this evening. We had special visitors there tonight, but some of the events you see here are our Back to Skills Studies, Skills Night, and then we also, this is our STEAM Family Night, where Coffee High students came, robotics team came. We appreciate that, Mr. Allen, that they were able to come. And of course, Mr. Jerry Hill came out. Let me just tell you, first kindergarten, pre-K, fifth grade, all of them enjoyed seeing those drones and being able to use those robotics cars. So it was, it was a fun-filled event for everyone. Of course, everyone enjoys having our Trojan players and cheerleaders come to visit. They do a great job of encouraging and inspiring our children. And let me just say, speaking of our hometown team, I'm just going to go ahead and say, Spirit Days are always fun for everyone. If you notice students celebrating this year, the graduate, we did a day where they celebrated the year they're graduating. And if you notice, those future 20, 34 students are representing Broxton very well. So look forward to be on them a few years. As always, the overall goal is toward the mission and vision of the Coffee County school system. This afternoon, I'd like to leave you with a quote, "Success isn't always about greatness, it's about consistency." As we work together to finish the year strong, we're going to work together keeping our school life goals in mind and understanding that consistency is how we're going to achieve success. It's always a pleasure to be here, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about Broxton Mary Hayes Elementary. Come out when you can.
Thank you, Ms. Penis. Great job. And who, the special visitors tonight?
Santa, the Grinch, Mammoth. Lots going on out there.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for being here. All right. We have a minutes from last month's meeting on the agenda. Do you want to take a moment to read over those? Could please, will we place ours on the consent agenda? Financial report. Ms. Bradford, you will present the financial report.
First document here, this is our financials as of November 30th, 2023. Our cash balance as of November 30th is $28,401,789.33. And as of July, we began the fiscal year with a fund equity of $28,854,285.32. So as of the end of the month, our fund equity is at $28,402,177.46. Our revenues for our taxes have been coming in in the month of November 30th. It's actually reflected in the revenue table. So our monthly comparison report here of the past, or the four years here, you can see, we're compared to the other fiscal years, you know, it's grown in the month of December due to our revenue speaking at the month of December. And our detail, our year-to-date expenditures, you can see there, our detail of our revenues. As of November, our revenues are at $24,503,231.19. And then the expenditures detail shows our total expenditures as of November at $24,953,158.99 for our fund equity to be at the $28,402,177.46. And then our SLOSH revenues for the month of November were $749,537.59, so an increase from last month. Any questions or concerns?
Thank you. East SLOSH Resolution, as part of the East SLOSH that was passed last month by the voters of the board, is asked to formally approve East SLOSH Resolution. And resolution is presented for the continuation of the Education Special Local Option Sales Tax as a result of voter approval through referendum November 7th, 2023. If it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for regular review. Satilla Elementary School Improvement. We are asking the board to hear a presentation tonight from Ms. Kim Miller about improvement at Satilla.
So I think you all had a presentation back in February about this, but this is an update on their performance. So Satilla is a school improvement school, and tonight I want to talk to you a little bit about the district plan of support and the actions and what some of the results of implementation are, school improvement actions and results, some school data, some of their successes, and how their plan is to sustain it moving forward. So just talking about their federal identification, there's different types of identifications that comes out from school improvement based on CCRPI results, based on the Jordan Milestone results. So first, there's the CSI school, which is the Comprehensive Support and Improvement Schools. And then, and then there's the targeted, targeted support and improvement schools. And I put a red arrow on this slide for you to see. This is what classification Satilla is in. And the reason that they were identified as a targeted support and improvement school is because they had at least one subgroup that is performing in the lowest 5% of all schools in at least 50% of the indicators and components based on the FY22 CCRPI. So here is a copy of what, how they're, how they receive the TSI status. You can see the three subgroups there, the black subgroup, students with disabilities, and white. In content mastery, they did not, they were in the lowest 5%. So that's how they became the, a TSI school. So some of the things that they've been doing, all, ever since their identification, and they've had support from the DOE, as well as Dr. Riva Smith, who works through RISA, but she works with school improvement. And they have been really monitoring standards-based classroom. And some of the results that they've had with that in the far right corner column. Their students from fall to winter, their performance has improved from 33.21% to 51.94% in LA, and from 16.61% in the fall to 47.14% in math. So that's a great gain there, so that's something to be very proud of. Then they wanted to look at the typical growth, and usually it was set at 35 percentile, students who showed typical growth on the STAR assessment in LA in math. And you can see that 49% third graders made typical growth, 34% was just under their, their goal, and then 58% of the fifth graders. Then in math, their fall to winter STAR assessment showed that 53% of third graders had typical growth, 50% fourth graders, and 64% fifth graders. And their student Lexiles increased by 22 points in third grade, 8 points in fourth grade, and 11 points in fifth grade. So they've had great gains focusing on some of the right work, and really it shows in this data. So they've also been looking at how the standards-based classroom is implemented, and this is where they really focused on instructional planning. And some of the data that they measured through Focus WALKs and 5x5s, they looked to make sure standards were posted, and you can see 95% were posted in a student-friendly language so that students truly understand what their targets were. And vocabulary of the standard is defined by students very easily. 95% of them, the learning target matched the standard. Teachers refer to the language of the standard as their, as their teaching. 98% of that, those do that. 95% of the students can articulate what they are learning, and when they teach a lesson, whatever their grading, to see if those students learned that standard, those tasks and assignments are aligned to the rigor and to the standard. So 94% of those teachers are doing that. Then they also looked at collaborative planning, and Satilla collaborative planning had, they had a checklist, and they had 15 measures on that checklist. And they had 100% of 14 of them, and 90% on one of them, and that was team members arriving on time. And then the, also that monitoring the, what is actually happening in collaborative planning, implementation of it, that's the same data that I just went over. Students have shown great growth, so we're very proud of them. And then, of course, I'm going to bring your attention to the very bottom one. With students with disabilities, 43% of the students with disabilities increased their STAR reading and STAR math scores by 3% or higher. So Satilla has a lot to be, be proud of, of how they're improving. Some of the actions, some of the actions that they've taken with their funds and through being a TSI school, they've employed two parapros to support teaching and learning in third, fourth, and fifth grade. They provided subs to support teachers to meet monthly to improve teaching and learning. They really looked at the standards, deconstructed those to make sure they understood them and how to plan their instruction around them. They focused on standards-based instruction with their instructional planning. I put ETS there, essential questions, activating teacher-directed instruction, and then, of course, summarizing. Focusing on student data to improve teaching and learning. Focusing on collaborative planning with all teachers to ensure that the focus is on teaching and learning and standards-based instruction, conducting Focus WALKs and 5x5s. The 5x5s are simply just trying to get in five classrooms and for a few minutes, just to check some balances, to make sure inspe what you inspe, and they've seen great results with that. Improved student performance. Improved student performance in content mastery by 5% on the ELA STAR, and 70% of the students will show typical growth, and I went over that data with you just a few minutes ago. And student literacy performance will improve by 10 points, and we saw that there were good gains from that when I went over that data. So here, you can see, this is kind of a predictor of what content mastery will look like on the Georgia Milestones this year. So for ELA, in the fall, when they did the assessment, they predicted that 33.21% of their students would do well on content mastery for ELA. But then in winter, which is in the bottom section, that dark blue, 51.94% would do well. So that's a great gain. And then for math, in the fall, 16.61%, and then in the winter, which they just finished those assessments, 47.14. So we're looking for good things this year from Satilla with their content mastery. I've gone over a lot of these school improvement successes in the chart, so I don't want to be repetitive. You can look at those, I think they're all the same. But one thing I do want to say on this, I can't give you a lot of details right now because the data is still embargoed to next week. But I think we're all gonna be very pleased with the outcome of the data from FY23 CCRPI. Now FY24 is yet to be seen because that will be based on this year's assessment, but I've looked at it, I've studied it, and I really think we're gonna be very pleased for Satilla when that, when those reports come out in a few weeks. So sustainability and next steps, they want to really continue to do effective planning for instruction. They want to continue to monitor and provide feedback on lesson plans and make sure that they're doing collaborative planning and they're continually looking at those standards and making sure that those teachers understand those standards, what they need to teach and what the students need to, what the outcome needs to be for the students. How their teachers are delivering instruction, they want to do focus walks, as I said earlier, to monitor, to inspect what you expect, and to do weekly five-by-fives. And then provide high levels of learning. Obviously, you have to build the knowledge base, that you also want them to take that knowledge and do something with it, problem solve, analyze, synthesize, so really looking at different levels of learning. And then students being able to understand what they're learning and what, and what that comes to be for them. So we look for great things in next week, when the data is public and when the list, and I refer to the list as the CSI and TSI list. I will say that in my first phase with the Board of Education, I had the opportunity to work with another TSI, two TSI schools, actually. And one thing that comes along with it is support from RISA and the State Department and money, and you get some really good things with that money. So I try to always encourage them not to be beaten about it, but take it an opportunity to really improve their schools. So Satilla's did a great job at that, and we look forward to seeing all the good things that comes with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? If there's no questions, we'll move forward with the CTA technology purchase.
Back again, Mrs. Martin. I do have some exciting, or an exciting purchase that we're wanting to get, you heard earlier we talked about, Mr. Hill could be a CNC router and laser system for his engineering classroom. We are going to use our SIR3 funds to fund this, and what you'll see up here is, it's three quotes, but what it is, the Redmond and Sun company, that quote has both of the pieces of equipment that we're wanting to purchase in one quote. I did define any company that had both pieces that were of the same kind that Redmond had. So the Torchmate Company, here we see the CNC router only, that particular company did not have the laser system, the engraving system that we wanted. And likewise, the laser system we wanted, Torchmate didn't have. So what you'll see is two separate items that would have to be purchased to meet what Redmond in their quote. And with that, we actually have our laser cutter that we're using in our Agmet classroom that came from Redmond and Sun. And we got that two years ago, maybe three years now, ain't three years now, and they have been awesome support. Anytime we've had questions, interest, and should be able to get them just like that. They come in and do training, set it up, they really are a great company here in Georgia to work with, and we've had good success with that particular company as well, helping us out here. Trying to think of anything else he had going on, but Mr. Hill had said he thought he was gonna get to make it tonight, but he didn't. But he did want me to say that with these two particular pieces of equipment, this would help our students with a lot of our industries. It may not be the particular piece of equipment they would be using, but they use the same type of software, the CAD software with their, and I believe it is, and I won't forget which two companies he mentioned that he's actually been in, I won't even quote now, but he did say there's two in Coffee County that use CAD software that he's talked with previously about some of the things that the kids would need with them. So it's kind of giving a leg up for those students to actually get hands-on using that software that comes along with these two pieces of equipment. Is there any questions?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dorsey. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Will place that on the consent agenda. Next item is the, let's see, Satilla Elementary School Library, Berdich.
Hey. Good over here.
Good.
So I know that that is a substantial amount of funding that we are asking you guys to look at approving, but we're wanting to use the funding source from L4GA, which was a grant for literacy that we did not get in Coffee County a few years ago because our scores were, from my understanding, they were higher than what, than what would apply for that. But, so at the time, Mr. Mollie was my principal, and he says shoot for the moon, and I think it gave him a heart attack when I wrote the initial grant because it was a lot of money. But anyway, the vision behind it was to create, our media center is in the hub of the school anyway, and all the wings are off of it, so our vision was to create an area where kids want to come, they want to come read, kind of cafe style, and so it was really funny because when we got this grant, Ms. Booth said, I don't know what you're wanting to do with the funds, but this is what I see. And I just kind of laughed and said, well, in our original plan, it was the same, a place that kids would want to come and read and have, we could have classes in there. And so she also shared with me that about the furniture, that a lot of the furniture was really like for high school because it was very tall, and so just kind of do a remake or renovation of the media center by getting new furniture that is a more friendly environment and welcoming the kids to want to read and actually be able to reach some of the books and, you know, be able to maneuver through the library a little more easily because it's been, it's been the same setup since I've been there, and that's been 25 years. So it's...
It's needed.
So I'm super excited. Ms. Booth has worked really hard to put together a plan and worked with both companies and to just make it a place that our kids already love going to, but just to give you that love for learning and reading in there. So we sure would appreciate your blessings on that.
Right, well, great. Looks good, and we have the L4 Georgia SIR3 funding available, so that's where we put towards Anderson. All right, Safety Department purchase, the Evolve System, and we're asking the board to approve this using ARP SIR3 funding, and this is safety equipment that will allow us to screen people before they come into our buildings where we can put this in act, and we just think it'll be a good safety addition to our buildings, and we would use SIR funding to pay for this equipment. Two of those, there's two of them.
There's four of them.
Where's the, two of Coffee and two of middle?
Yes, that's what we were planning. But the good thing, the good thing about these are, they are portable, so if we needed, had a need to arise to go somewhere else with them, we could do that. And so we're excited about that part of it, too, that not only can you use it at one or two different schools, you can move them around as needed, too. So such as graduation, where we have a high number of people coming in, we could screen that many people coming in and feel good about them not having weapons on them. So that was really, really exciting for this piece of equipment.
Now, when you say portable, do you mean like when I run to the grocery store with my old sack, or you mean like a portable unit that's gonna have to take a team maybe?
No, sir, I, from my understanding, it's, you roll, you lean it back, and it's got wheels on it, you pretty well push it, it's 20 pounds.
Okay.
So very, very much portable. And these are the rugged ones, too, so they will, of course, take a little bit more, which we're, you know, of course, we're gonna be really, really careful with them, we're not gonna beat them up or whatever, but they are more ruggedized system than the average.
The next item is the Safety Department Tactical Best. And it's time for those desks to be replaced. They have expiration dates on those types of equipment, and so we're asking board to purchase these new tactical vests using East Bloss lines.
Yes.
All right. If there's no questions, we'll place those items on the consent agenda. And staff, great job tonight, bringing forward all of this good items for the board to consider. Really good night. Meeting dates is our last agenda item. We've got those dates that sit on the table, we presented them last month, and we're asking board to approve them this month. If there's no amendments to be made, we'll place that on the consent agenda to be approved at the regular meeting. All right. I do have a need for an executive session to discuss personnel, hiring, employment, evaluation of employees, and also real estate. We need a motion to the agency of the executive session. Ms. Wade, Ms. Johnson, on favor. Thank you.
Yeah, motion to executive session.
Motion to the executive session.
Mr. Taylor.
Ms. Johnson.
Executive session, next is it, and the conversation is adjourned.